I'd like to call this meeting to order and we're going to begin with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Bab. Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm looking to see if there are any elected officials in the audience. Please raise your hand if I've not spotted you. Just by way of information, Mr. McMillan is not able to make it tonight because of a family illness. We are also minus Ms. Bounds who is heading toward the birth of another grandchild. And we're also absent our board secretary, Terry Cotney, who has had some personal illness but is recovering nicely. But we know Ms. Good can absolutely take care of us, so anyway, we're glad you're here. You bet, you bet. By way of another announcement, when the board approved our annual calendar last summer, we tentatively scheduled a called meeting for consideration for the fiscal year 2020 budget for April 10th. Now that we have a better understanding of the timing of BEP projections, which are still very fluid from what I understand, Superintendent Thomas and I agreed to put this meeting off to our quarterly workshop, which was already scheduled, and that's going to be on Wednesday, April 24th. So we will be discussing at the beginning of that evening. We'll have a called meeting to discuss the budget and also to vote on the budget. We have to have it submitted by April 30th to County Commission, so that is the timeframe we're on right now. Mr. Thomas, did you want to add anything about the budget meeting, the fact that we're doing it, when we're doing it?
Yes, Madam Chair, we've tried to, throughout the year, I guess, try to provide more information to the board and we're still working on a recommendation, but we'll have that information ready for you at the workshop or the special call meeting and get the budget approved hopefully at that point in time. And in the meantime, to be available to respond to any questions that you might have as we have tried to be and do in the past, so.
All right, thank you, thank you. And we really appreciate the work that a lot of our constituents out there have done toward really examining the budgeting and everybody's working hard to come up with the best numbers that we can at this point. Also, before I get on to changes in the agenda with the board's indulgence, this is not down, but I'd like to ask Jennifer Owens to go ahead and give us a recent update, a class report on what's been happening in Nashville.
All right, we've been going back and forth to Nashville the past few weeks and we are looking especially at three fairly damaging bills. The first has to do with creating a state board that would be a charter authorizer. So what that means is that when a charter school wants to apply to be a charter school in our county, they would not have to come to us, they could go directly to that board. And even though they have changed the language in that bill somewhat, it still says that they may come to us. It does not say that they have to come to their local board. So anyone who wanted to start a charter school anywhere in the state could go directly to that state charter authorizing board that is an appointed board, it's not elected. And just by having that board, it gives them a financial interest in being there because if they're not approving any schools, then obviously you don't need that board. But if they are approving lots and lots of schools, then they obviously are necessary. The other thing that does is it creates a school district. That board becomes an LEA. So it takes all those charter schools that they are approving and it makes them the LEA for those charter schools. And they can put them anywhere they want to. If they wanted to put five charter schools right next to one of our schools, they could. And we would have absolutely no say. There are also some parts that are very concerning because they talk about land that is not fully used. And some questions that have come up have to do with whether the land is fully occupied and whether a charter school could take over a building that is brand new but is not fully occupied yet. And no one has successfully answered that question about whether a charter school could come in while a county is building a building and take over that building. So those are some very concerning parts in that piece of legislation that's moving forward. The other bill that is still moving is House Bill 939 and it is the Education Savings Account or ESA voucher program and it has nothing at all to do with education savings accounts, the way we know them with a bank. Throughout its passage through each committee, they have changed quite a lot of the language. It started as a caption bill, which means that it's a very broadly captioned piece of legislation that could really have almost anything attached to it. So everything in the amendment is the bill. There's nothing from that original bill that's still there. And they have been amending it as close to meeting time as the morning of. So it might be 9:00 AM that morning, they are going to have a meeting at noon and they have just gotten a 17 or 20-page bill. So they have taken some things out or they've taken some language out, but they haven't necessarily removed the concerns. The biggest concern that I personally have that has been the same in all of these and is also in our current law under the IEA voucher program that they passed is that when a participating student accepts these funds, participation in the program has the same effect as a parental refusal to consent to the receipt of services under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. In other words, accepting the funds means they give up their federal rights to all special education services. And that's the language directly in the bill. So they would have no rights at all. Their school that they're going to would not have to provide any special education services. Additionally, if they return to a public school, if they had an IEP before, that's gone. They have to start all over. But there's nothing that says they would have to start all over. So they might also not have those rights in their public school. So that is also concerning because there's nothing in legislation that anyone has been able to point to that says those rights ever return. The next part that is concerning is that they don't actually have to spend all of the funds. So $7,300, you think that that, we already realize that's not enough to educate a student for a year, but the parent also doesn't have to spend them. They could be putting them into a fund drawing interest toward college for this whole time that the student is doing whatever. And that's concerning. Lots of people are talking about 13 years of that, but it's not actually 13 years, it's actually 17 years because a student could do that either until they graduate or turn 22. So it actually incentivizes the student to not graduate on time. So it would incentivize them to wait until age 22 to have that additional funds. However, at age 18, not mentioning their ability at all, at age 18, all of the control of that money automatically goes to the student. It is no longer in the parent's control at all. So even if they may not be able to handle that fund, that it's theirs. The, let's see, the last thing I guess I really need to mention is that it has been sold as something especially for low-income students in high-needs areas. However, it, the cap, which they've brought down a little bit, but is still two times the cost or the threshold for free lunch. So that would give a family of four, I believe, about $64,000. However, that's only the year prior to the student taking the funds. Their parent could be making a million dollars this year, doesn't matter. If they only made $64,000 last year or anything less than that for that family of four, then that student can take that funding until they turn 22. So for 17 years, that would be their funding even if their parents are making millions. So that's another piece that has not been removed yet. They've talked about removing the homeschool section. However, it doesn't say anything about a cooperative that might be two homes side by side. That's still a small school and so there are still concerns there also about, the homeschool association was very concerned about delegitimizing what they do. And so that concern is still there. Even though they've taken out the words homeschool, it could still be that small collaborative. And that, I might also mention that one of those small collaboratives that is funded by Betsy DeVos has been showing up locally in Facebook ads toward our parents. I had a parent send me a copy of their ad the other day. And they're being targeted through Facebook ads for that small school collaborative. So that's something to know. And I would very strongly recommend that everyone call your legislator and let them know how you feel about this. Call them often. And if they tell you that these words are gone, ask them to show you that they're gone. One of the gentlemen who is not one of our legislators but from another county who switched his vote between the time that the subcommittee met and the time that the committee met did not realize that special education students would be giving up their rights under IDEA. He had no idea and he had already voted to pass this. So please help your legislators understand that this is more than just people saying, hey, we don't want this. This is highly damaging to students and they really need to step back and take some time to realize what they're looking at. Have another one, but we'll save it and do it another time. It's not moving as fast.
Thank you, you're doing a great job, Ms. Horn.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Owen, thank you so much for keeping us in the loop. It's hard to keep up with all the amendments, so I didn't know where we were today. What, has anything changed on the language at the beginning was that because our district has schools on the priority list, that any of our students are eligible. Is that still the case? Because it certainly ought to only be priority school students.
Right, so any county that has three or more schools on the priority list, any county that has three or more schools that are in that 10%, any student in the entire district would be eligible. If they took that funding in kindergarten from Knox County Schools and they moved to another county, they still get to take it even if their county is not one of those challenged areas. And it's our understanding that it would still come out of our funding.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. If you'll keep us informed, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you for that. I know you've worked hard at keeping abreast of that and it's, your updates are greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. Moving on, are there any requested changes to the meeting agenda? Yes, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to add a discussion item and we'll just call it certified employees.
All right, to understand, you'd like that at the end of tonight's workshop, is that correct?
That's okay, yes.
Do I hear any objections to this addition? If not, all in favor, aye. Opposed? We will add it to the agenda. All right. Mr. Thomas, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board have several updates for you this evening. We recently honored the KCS Districtwide Teacher of the Year winners and I'm pleased to announce that one of them has been selected as a region-level finalist. Alice Carson is a math teacher at Powell High School and will move on in the selection process for region-level Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Ms. Carson on this great honor and we'll certainly be rooting for her as the competition continues. Also, I want to congratulate Dr. Corey Smith on being selected for the 2019 TSBAP Perspective Superintendent's Academy. This is a year-long program designed to prepare potential candidates for superintendent's positions in Tennessee public schools. Program will provide intensive, in-depth preparation for the challenging job of being a public school superintendent. We know that Dr. Smith will represent Knox County well in this program. We have two important events that are coming up soon. On Saturday, the KCS Special Education Department will host a Next Steps Transition Conference from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Central High School. This free event is designed to help students with disabilities and their families plan for life after high school. I'd like to encourage anyone who's interested to attend. Our annual dine-out for education fundraiser will be held next Tuesday, April 9. Participating restaurants donate 10% of their proceeds from the day's receipts to the Partners in Education program, which helps students and teachers in a number of ways such as mobile screening vans, research tools for school libraries, and Career Day. Flyers that identify the participating restaurants will be distributed to students this week, so please take advantage of this opportunity to support partners in education. Finally, I'd like to remind everyone that schools, the central office, and maintenance departments will be closed on Friday, April 19th for the Good Friday holiday. Madam Chair, members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, Superintendent Thomas, could you tell me the date of the dine-out again? I see the flyer, but I don't.
Oh, yes, the date for dine-out education, Tuesday, April 9.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
All right, without further discussion then, we'll move on to the agenda items. I am looking at five. Letter C, number one. Number two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Moving on to board policies. Just for your information, these are all second readings. Policy A. B. C. D. E. F. G. And H. Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, let's see, I've lost track here. You're going too fast for me.
Oh, I apologize.
131, I would like to ask, 131 and.
Which is item F.
Okay.
Okay.
And then also the public forum. Is public forum on here? Okay, 180 and 131. I'd like to ask those to be sent back to the Policy Review Committee.
All right, so you're requesting they be sent back to Policy Review as opposed to Board Discussion, is that correct?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's the best place to do the discussion for these.
All right, we're looking at Policy A then.
Yeah, could I, should I make it as a motion? The Review Committee is next Wednesday.
That's correct.
Okay, then I'd like to make that as a motion.
All right, we have a motion to move A and F to refer them back to Policy Review Committee. Mr. Dubler, is that?
I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Norman and I were talking about it. I mean, what, I mean, I think tonight, I mean, it's good for him to point this out and discuss it, but I mean, the proper way to do it would be to make a motion at next week's voting meeting and then ask at the beginning of the, before the agenda's approved, to go ahead and ask to remove those for the Policy Review.
I appreciate that since this is a workshop. All right, having that be regarded as the appropriate format, I will ask again then, since this is a workshop, is there any discussion on Board Policy A? And Mr. Norman, I'm assuming your light is off now?
Yes.
All right. And again, any discussion on Policy F? All right, moving along to number seven, Grants. Letter A. Is this on Grants?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Thomas, I'm just looking at this grant and since it's from the city of Knoxville, is it confined to city schools or will it be, just a little bit more explanation on this grant?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bab. And Mr. Oaks, we had a conversation just the other day, so Russ has got a little bit more information on that. So, Mr. Oaks, if you would.
It's actually a federal grant that we applied for in partnership with the city of Knoxville and the city manages it and it is not limited to just schools in the city.
Will it be working with, I guess from my reading of it, it's basically to better train our RSOs?
There are a number of things that we're going to do with it. There's training involved in there and there's some purchases of minor equipment, some campus-based radios and some laptops for security officers and then some funding in there for us to look at visitor management systems. And the principals have been asking us, or it's something they're very interested in and we need to do a little more research on it and there's sort of a space holder in there to give us some funds to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Oaks. All right, moving along to item B. C. D. E. F. G. H. I. And just as a side note on item I, if anyone in the audience or at home has not pulled up the tape watching the Ellen Diner Show when our Gibbs Elementary was on it, you really need to. It's quite, it's quite exciting to watch. All right, moving along to Grants. Item A. I'm sorry, Contracts, item A, I apologize. And item B. Regular agenda items, this is number nine, looking at item A. B. Ms. Satterfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a little conversation with Gary Dupler about Constitution Day, but Superintendent Thomas, could you, if you have any additional information on what that day is? I know we talked about it could be what Governor Lee kind of talked about with the civics, but do we have any idea what we would do as Knox County Schools to make that happen?
And which, I'm sorry.
The date on. Nope, what date is it?
I don't, Dr. Rice, you know, you and the Calendar Committee worked on this, so. Question about September 17th, Constitutional Day.
I'll say this while I call Ms. Judy Nugent up, we have an expert in the crowd, but it is basically the teaching and lessons and activities around the Constitution for that time, but Ms. Nugent will be able to fill us any more as our social studies supervisor.
Yeah, I would just like to know what, and I know it's early stages, what do we have, like, what would that look like?
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you for asking. We have September 17th on the calendar every year. It's a very important day, obviously, for many reasons. So in the recent past, we have had in-service for our teachers preceding September 17th. We offer them a plethora of lessons, activities. They are able to collaborate with their peers and take those suggestions that we often get from TDOE and from other valid sites that we well researched before we put this out. So it is a very important event. It's very important that every teacher pause and social studies teacher pause and that is the intent behind it, to recognize Constitution Day and to possibly take the suggested lessons that we put online and we put them on our school wires website. My instructional coaches, Dean Burris and Catherine Petco, worked hard this past, like I said, August and held an in-service. And so that's common practice that we promote it among all of our teachers. So it's pretty well advertised.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bab?
Yes, I just, I don't think we've done it in the past. I noticed it's not on this year's calendar, but I know traditionally the day preceding the first real half-day for students has been the new sixth graders and new ninth graders' visitation day. And I wanted to see if we could actually put that on the calendar. A lot of parents, especially as they're entering the middle school and the high school, as they're trying to make plans in the summer, have no idea when that really is. So if we could actually officially add that, I think that would be very helpful to our parents. And I know there's probably nothing we can do about it, but I think the way it falls, kind of like it's falling this year and looks like it'll fall next year, since we start school officially on a Monday, it means backing it up to the week before, which is even getting earlier in August. I don't know that anything can be done but that, but I do hate that it's like we're taking another week away of the summer. So anyway, even if we can't do it, I hope that we'll officially mark that on the calendars to help parents.
Dr. Rice, didn't I see a change in formatting on those first days for our rising sixth and ninth graders?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Bab. So we, I don't think that, I mean, I think we can do that, add that to the calendar. I get with Mr. Trent, we'll make sure we have those on there. He did get input from principals about when the best day would be to do that. I think historically we've done it right up until where the next day kids come and I think the principals have asked that we move that back a day so they have another day to be, to prepare for students coming. So I think that's, I think what you're referring to, Ms. Hill. And it wouldn't be a big deal for us to put that on there, we can add that to it. Just, if I could, just say a little bit about how the committee works and that sort of thing. So every year, we had, we kind of get the same cast of characters. They're different people, but they have different roles. So this year, we had nine teachers, three parents, KCEA, the Knox County PTA, the principals that recognize every, or the association leaders of every grade band, high school, middle school, elementary, and then 10 different district departments that all came together. And, you know, it is a big deal, but it's kind of fun to get that whole group together because they all have different ideas of, from their perspective of what's kind of happened. So we get everybody together, we go over the state laws that are required in the calendar and the number days for this, number days for that. And so that was, to your point, Ms. Bab, we usually put two drafts out for them to have something to react to and we actually came out with version three out of the committee that we didn't have in there. And that was one of the concerns about moving, there's something about if it's a July start versus an August start that they didn't really like. And so they elected to move those days into that timeframe. The other one is around winter break, which is always, we had some versions that broke midweek and a lot of the principals and teachers talked about attendance being really down on those first couple days, so to shift that back to where it was a Friday that ended those days seemed to make sense, too. Another thing that they put in for this year that's different than we've had in the past was the, if you look at the sheet that talks about the spread of the days, first semester has 85 days and second has 92. And they've just looked at historically, we've, if it's not been snow, it's been flu or this year flood. And the teachers really mentioned that squeeze on the day. So if they, you know, they think it'll pretty much come out in the wash to have 85. So, if they, you know, they think it'll pretty much come out in the wash to have 85 per semester to do that. So, that was another adjustment we kind of made to this calendar. But...so, those are...they were, like you said, not wanting to start back even on in-service in July, and we get that. So, we made that adjustment as far as we could and still get that split to where, you know, kind of Christmas falls where Christmas falls. You try to get to where you can have all the days to do that end-of-the-year test and that sort of thing each semester to do that. So, that was some of their thinking. It was maybe a little different this year for the one coming up, but a good meeting, good conversation.
One more question I have, just looking at the 2021 schedule, kind of referring to what is happening for this upcoming year. If you look, on August 10th is going to be the first day of school. August 7th...because it sounds like this coming year, they're wanting a teacher day before the schools start...kids start on Monday, but for the 2021 year, the kids, the...like the sixth graders and the...no, incoming sixth graders and six...incoming ninth graders, probably they would not want them starting on August 6th in that year because that is an election day, and the primary will be held for the presidential primary. So, I just didn't know if they're taking that into account in that year.
Good question, and so we have worked with Cliff Rogers and had some great meetings with them on that. The change that I was talking about for this year was...is for the 1920 calendar, that we're going to move that to a Thursday, and Mr. Trent has given me the head nod that we're right on that, okay? So, that we're moving that to the...that will be Thursday for this one. Kind of, we can go year-to-year on that. We've never tried doing this a day before, so we'll see what it looks like now and get input, but I think you're right. If it does work, we might have to move it to that Wednesday and then...or Friday again. We'll get feedback on how we do that, but if we're going to mark it on the calendar on the front end, that's probably a discussion we need to have a little bit more.
All right, Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, my question, you've kind of addressed it already. First of all, I like the way this calendar falls. It's nice, the way the fall semester is, but...and obviously, we do end up usually not using all of the days during the second semester because of all the issues we have and schools out. So, the...we typically have 88 or 89 days in the fall semester, so having 85 days, you feel like will probably still be comparable in the spring, and that won't be a strain for those block classes in the fall season when they're going to have...because that's quite a...when you just look at the calendar, 85 to 92 is quite a big difference.
That's a good question, and again, one that the committee talked back and forth about, and I think if you look at...if you kind of look at our last three-year trend, we've used seven to eight days, so if you subtract those away in the 92, you're right back at that 85. And I think, you know, they felt like, based on what we've seen, you know, I think before there was such thing as flu days, but, you know, it affects our adults a lot and our bus drivers and substitutes and that sort of thing. So, I think they're just...I think they've got...the committee had gotten a lot of input around that, that the crunch for spring was a lot tighter. You know, it's been a long time since we missed a day in the fall, and they felt like they could get it done in those 85 days.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, still under regular agenda items, C. Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question on this was, in looking over this, there are a lot of books on here that are consumables, and I've talked with some science teachers particularly about consumables, and I know I've mentioned this to Dr. Ryswick already, that they would rather have the actual book versus consumables. So, can someone speak to that, and if...I'm sure it was discussed in the committee, but just kind of that issue, please.
If it's okay, I'll have Ms. Jackson, and I know Ms. Urles is here as well, so we'll tag team if we need to.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. We have had a lot of conversations around the consumable, the digital, and the direction that textbooks are going. I do have people here who can probably speak more to the granular decisions that our committees made, but in many cases, as they're looking at the content, this was the decision of this teacher committee, as they were able to review all the options and have copies of everything in front of them, and so they weighed all of those options as they then gave us their recommendation. So, if you'd like me to have somebody who can speak to a particular discipline, I'd be happy to call somebody up.
Well, my question was really more of just a general question because it had come up regarding the science textbook or consumables versus the textbooks. So, you know, I knew you probably had had that conversation, so I just thought this would be an appropriate time to address that again, and so basically, that this is what the teachers that were on the committee preferred.
It is. Yes, these are the teachers who were sworn in in the committee, which I think the board approved those members in November. And we asked them to really think about making sure that there's equity and access to the materials as they're considering them, and so I think in many cases, you know, that's where the whole conversation about the structure of how the material is delivered and handed to the students is part of what the teachers are thinking about when they make those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, wasn't...do I recall correctly that there's also a cost differential?
There can be. What we have figured out is that as things have moved to the digital and the consumable and the hard copy textbook, the publishers, they are getting paid, so they have figured out how to make their expenses. So, we have found that it's not necessarily cheaper to go with one route versus the other, and our teachers, actually, the committees who are reviewing the textbooks are not supposed to see pricing when they're making those decisions.
Oh, very good. Ms. Horn.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have another question. Another issue, since we're talking about history, you know, there's always the conversation of revision of history and whether we have true history reflected in our textbooks. So, is they...when the committee is reviewing these social studies textbooks, I'm assuming that they are looking for specific items that are...that they would be able to recognize if we have accurate information in our textbooks.
These are our social studies teachers who teach those specific courses, who are reviewing the materials, and this is true with any of our disciplines. The state puts out a rubric for us to use that is also developed by a teacher committee the year prior to the adoption, so they're looking for those elements that could potentially be significant barriers or significant positives to a particular textbook, and those would be very discipline-specific. So...and then the teachers on the textbook committee are trained in how to use those materials and make their selections from that, but they have access to the full range of the content that they are looking through with their professional expertise to make those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving along to Item D and E. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to, on Item D, I'd just like to congratulate Scott and say what a...well, he's just given us great service, and it's been my pleasure to work with him, and I just think the system is doing a good thing by appointing him. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norman. All right, looking at Item E, this is discussion and possible action on the superintendent's evaluation process. Ms. Owen, would you like to address that?
I would just remind everyone that this is just the tool that we are using, that we're looking at. There may be some changes based on whether ten-ready is available, and so those would all come at the end of the year. Obviously, we don't have any metrics yet, since we don't have those, so those are not going to be included until we get them. At that time, we will go over this tool again and determine whether all of these pieces are parts that we need to include, or if there's something that has come up that we need to leave some questions out or change them. If the Department of Research and Accountability has something else that we can use in their place, we could use that in their place or not, and we'll decide that at that time. So, until we have that actual data, we are not voting on the data to be used. We are only voting on this as the tool to use.
All right. Ms. Bab.
Yes, I have a question, and this is a lot from me just being first year in the process and having questions about that, so y'all might can clarify this, but...and it came up a little bit when we went to our training this weekend at National School Board Association, but I've noticed, like, in different categories, we average it, and so I guess what I'm curious about is, as far as giving feedback to the superintendent, like, in a certain area, is he going to see actual scores he gets or just an average? Because one of the things they were pointing out is, like, you know, you might have half the people give ones and half the people give fives, which shows people are very different views, but it averages to a three that just seems like everything's great. So, I just didn't know how we kind of handled that.
Mr. Dupler, may I want to clarify this? It's my understanding that all of this is public record.
Okay.
And so, he sees everything that we put in it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
And if I may, each of these categories that sort of averaged together, last time that we did this, I was curious about, you know, what if we averaged it differently and didn't average the categories and then averaged the numbers, would it come out differently? And I actually...I actually went through and did the math with the numbers that we had used in our actual evaluation, and it came out almost exactly the same regardless of which way we organized it and did it using those actual numbers that we used. So, I think it's not going to significantly adjust anything if we average it this way, and that also gives us an opportunity and the superintendent an opportunity to look at a score in an area.
All right, any other questions, comments? And, Mr. Thomas, I understand that you've seen this document also.
Yes, ma'am. I've worked with Ms. Owen, and I'm very comfortable with the valuation and understand that, you know, you're my bosses, so whatever the valuation is, I'll do my best to live up to it, do a good job.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And, Ms. Owen, you and your team, Ms. Bowns, and...well, I started on it before this, yes, but you also had, when I dropped off, was it you, Ms. Horn? Thank you. Thank you. This is...if you've never tried to write in an evaluation, let me tell you, it's a handful. So, thank you. Thank you for carrying through. Ms. Bab.
Just one more question, and this is a little bit, like I said, made in the learning process of it, but in the one, there's a section called Increasing Student Achievement, and when I look at those, a lot of it's about Mr. Thomas's leading his administrative team and that sort of stuff. What are the tools we use to have the information to evaluate him?
There are several different things that we would have. One...one of the most significant ones that we will have will be his self-narrative, and so that will give us an opportunity to look at what he is telling us that he believes he did in that area, and then we can have that discussion individually. Also, we have some survey information that comes from the Office of Research and Accountability, and that will tell us where our employees stand on some of those issues and whether, for example, I think there's one that talks about whether they...whether our certified employees consider it a good place to work and learn, and so that survey is where that kind of information would come from. Did I cover all those? Was anything else left out?
And you...I mean, you repeated earlier also about if there's not a metric available, which some of these do require that, then.
And I might also clarify, the way that this was done, long before I was a board member, it was all just narrative, and so all the board members wrote paragraphs about how they felt that the superintendent had done over the past year, and then the chair's responsibility was to put all that together into the evaluation. So, it's kind of difficult to take paragraphs and put them together into something that is cohesive and representative of everyone. So, I think this will give us both of those opportunities, since there is a section for our comments, and we also have that opportunity to discuss it with our superintendent and adjust however we might need to.
And also, for clarification, Ms. Bab, you will be meeting with the superintendent also on this, so that's...that gives you the opportunity sometimes to expand on things that are difficult to put in writing, so I always appreciate that opportunity for face-to-face. All right, are there any other questions or comments on this tool? All right, and looking at Item F, approved the 19...2019 to '24 Five-Year Strategic Plan and a report from the committee. Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, Ms. Satterfield and Ms. Owen and I worked on a draft that we brought to the board in a work session last month, and so the...what you'll see in the smaller document is what we talked about last time, and I think everything that was discussed in that meeting is reflected in here. There were a couple of things that we kind of touched on that we may want to change, but we didn't land on what we actually wanted those to be. So, if anyone has suggestions to those two places, one was under reading proficiency, provide dedicated and qualified instructional reading support for elementary schools. That was a suggestion, so we may want to look at that specifically. The other one was under exceptional place to work and learn. I think there was some question about the verbiage on create a minority educators advisory council to address and enhance staff diversity. So, those are kind of the two that we touched on that we might want to revisit, so those would be the two that I would say we need to take a look at. And then, if you'll look at the other document that includes the same information but also includes the metrics, the one thing that we talked about was having a CTE measurement, and there's been some conversation, and I've talked with Keith Wilson today about whether, if you look at the bottom of Increasing Student Achievement, this page, that is the metrics for that section, under ready graduates, we talked about having some sort of specific CTE measurement, but in further conversation, I think we may address that with the one above it, the percentage of graduates deemed ready graduates. So, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to have Mr. Wilson just speak to that so that he can tell you kind of more about the conversation he and I had regarding this particular metric. So, if...Mr. Wilson, if you would, just give us your thoughts on whether if we use the percentage of graduates deemed ready graduates and delete the last metric, if that would give us the feedback and the information that we're looking for.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair and other board members. Yeah, that...again, we've had a lot of discussion internally, Steve Rutter, myself, and then also with Ms. Horn, about kind of what was appropriate in terms of a CTE measure, and I would echo what you're saying. I think that using that ready graduate measure, because it is a matrix really that over...that looks at all these different early post-secondary opportunities, really does provide a snapshot when you think about holding, I guess, schools accountable for how they are serving their students and their community and opportunities for the students that they have. If you reduce it down to looking at the individual episodes, so if we were to say, let's just track, did we increase AP course offerings, or did we increase dual enrollment offerings? Industry certifications would be the same way. We could definitely promote practices that would drive those numbers up, but that doesn't necessarily mean it would be the most valuable early post-secondary opportunity for the kids in that building and in that situation. And so, when we think about, and I guess what I feel strongly about around the ready graduate indicator as being a good model, is that it does require a conversation, I think, at the school level to look at the students you serve and look at that community and make decisions about where are we missing opportunities and where do we need to flesh out our programming more. And so, similarly, when you look at, like, the metrics that are there, it seems right to me that we're not looking at dual enrollment specifically by itself and AP specifically by itself. I think industry certifications really should be looked at in that same vein. In addition to that, you know, it's something that we're very subject to the state in terms of what gets approved to be an aligned industry certification, and that's a catalog that changes annually, and so I hear different things, and you never know what the future holds, but I've heard that they're going to expand this catalog of industry certifications, and I've heard that it may be reduced. And so, that's something to keep in mind, too, when you start trying to set percentages of graduates that would increase. That's really setting a goal for the whole student population, and what we know is that every kid doesn't take a CTE course, and that's unlikely to change in the near future when we think about quality CTE. about quality CTE programming, it should be providing a, a deep dive, a program C, or a sequence of courses for students. And we don't, in my mind, again, want to, to build a notion that we need to offer just CTE classes that have an industry certification and promote as many kids into those electives as possible. That's really not the spirit of what you do with a CTE program in terms of providing a quality program. So just those, as we're thinking about a metric, I want to, I want to have a metric that really promotes practice at the building level that I think really fits the spirit of what ready graduates about and why we're pushing for industry certifications anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And Mr. Thomas and I have talked about having, looking at each specific individual high school to be sure that they are addressing their community with offerings that will promote ready graduates for that building. So, so that's, that's, those were really the three areas that we had questions on that were kind of outstanding. And so beyond that, I'll just see what other information board members would like to offer.
All right. And just for clarification, so this will be rolled into
Yes, so
graduate. That will be totally eliminated?
Correct. So I will make a motion next week that we delete that fourth metric and that information will actually be presented, yeah, presented to us as part of the ready graduates.
Okay.
So that we will be receiving reports on ready graduates, which will include all of those different aspects that are listed below. All of those things are broken down below in the, in those bullets. So we will be, they will report back to us on those things. It will just be as a total. I appreciate that Mr. Wilson does not want schools trying to hit certain numbers, which may mean that they're offering classes that are not appropriate for their student body. So I think that this makes the most sense.
Makes more sense, thank you. Ms. Bab?
Yes, I liked Mr. Wilson's explanation about really, we, it sounds like what we need to do is figure out what is the right thing for the child. But along those lines too, and I'm not sure maybe how we measure it or if it's measurements that we include in this, while this is going on, it sounds like we are trying to move that there are actually truly pathways to certifications versus just random CTE courses that are really not leading our kids to anything. And I feel like we've talked as a board, or it sounds like there are a lot of discussions that we want to move that way, but it doesn't sound like we're actually metric, having metrics for it. And maybe it's not appropriate here, but I do feel like we need to have some sense as a board moving forward that we are going deep at these schools, depending on what the schools need. But I don't know necessarily that that last point is, is what we're looking for.
All right. Mr. Thomas, did you have any comment about, about that? All right.
Yeah, we, well, in, in executive team meetings, we've talked about this, and also Dr. Reiswick and the research team, Steve Rutter, looking at each high school and what, what EPOs are available in the way of advanced placement courses, dual credit, industry certifications, even looking at the military test, we're looking at all that. But, but just to make sure that, that, that every child has a, a large number of opportunities. You may not, we want everyone, I'll say this again, to score a 21 and above, preferably even 36 is on the ACT. But, but in lieu of that, to become a ready graduate, there are other ways to get there. So are we making sure that our high schools are providing enough opportunities and variety of opportunities in order to get there? So, and to make sure, looking at all of our schools, they're, they're equitable in the, in the way that those opportunities are being provided. So I think even tomorrow, Mr. Trent's even scheduled, I believe, and Steve Rutter to talk to our high school principals about, about that information. And we can get that out to the, to the board as well. Excuse me.
That'd be great, that'd be great. Ms. Owen?
Yes, somehow I missed seeing this as I was looking at it earlier. I'm, I also miss, I miss seeing the languages that are spoken in Knox County schools. I think that's very valuable and lots of people are really surprised by the languages that are spoken. And that's, that's not here in this Schools at a Glance section anymore. And I would love to add that back if we could.
Ah.
Just anywhere in there.
That's a good catch.
I, lots of, lots of people comment on that, that it's really surprising, the number of languages spoken. So I, I think that's valuable information to have.
All right, Mr. Thomas? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I think you wanted to address that.
Yes, go ahead. I have two other things.
Yes, we're glad to get that, put that information in. And then as, as Ms. Owen was talking, it reminded me, I think we need to check our budget number. I believe it's 485.1 million, I think 484.5 is, or point five is listed here. So if the board's okay with that, we'll make sure that, that the correct budget number is there.
All right. Ms. Owen?
The next thing, I, I just want to note that I definitely agree with moving or removing the last metric under the ready graduates because that also makes it match better with the evaluation tool and put that all together. And that, that works very nicely. And the last thing, we're, we're still looking at five columns of data in the metrics, but it's really only three years because we have our baseline and then we have this year that we're in now. But we just have three years and we need to have five. So if we could stretch that out two more years, unless we want to say in here somewhere that we are going to do that later.
Hmm.
Because it is a five-year plan, so we should have those five-year metrics, I think.
I, I, I see what you're talking about. We might have to have Ms. Cote need to play with that.
Steve Rutter would do that.
Or Steve, oh, okay. As far as the formatting of
Yeah, he would give, I mean, he would indeed provide the metrics to Terry.
But, all right, I'm with you. That would be great. She can do that, all right. Ms. Terry, we're talking about you if you're watching. Ms. Satterfield?
Well, I want to thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Bab, are you still on the metrics? Because I'm going to take it to a different direction.
Well, I guess a little bit, like Ms. Owen's kind of was jumping around. And I've got things in different spots. I didn't know if we wanted each of us, and it, it's more in the, within the metric part that I have some questions. I just didn't know how we wanted to address it because I do have several things, but they're kind of all over the place. And I don't know if we wanted me to bring them up or if we were going to go through sections of it.
Since it appears that we have quite a bit of dialogue on this, I will, I'll back up and we will go section by section.
Is that okay?
Oh, absolutely. I real, I didn't know what type of feedback we might be getting on this.
And it's not lots, but mine are kind of in different spots.
All right. Just to start from the first page. Okay? Everybody good with that? All right. Looking at the second page, the
Are you in this document?
The actual brochure. Right now is what I'm looking at.
Okay.
But it, but we, we do need to line it up with, yeah. And this, this does not have page numbers on it, so. For conversation, let's go ahead and go into the, the first goal, Increasing Student Achievement. And then it's broke down into the different proficiencies. Did we have more conversation on, on that section? All right, moving along. And I know Ms. Satterfield has some comments on the eliminating disparities.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Members, if you can locate the document on your notes that says Strategic Plan 2019 to 2024, because this is what I'll go by. Perfect. So after we released this document to the public, we gained some, received some feedback on making sure that we have language in the eliminating disparities part that holds the board accountable to make sure that we are eliminating disparities. When we were in the Strategic Plan Committee, we had a lot of conversation about what direction do we want to go with making it so limited to the certain programs that we've had in the past because in the next three to five years, if something comes up, can, do we have room to move into a new direction with the idea of still maintaining that we're eliminating disparities? And so with that, that's how we got to the point of removing the language of culture competency, PBAIS, and restorative justice. However, given the feedback that we received from the community, I think we, that I received from the community, I think what I'm about to present can kind of give a middle ground. And so the first one, so I'm looking at the first bullets. The bullets under Provide Student Support. So if you look at the second bullet where it says equip educators with resources, tools, and training to build strong relationships with students, I would like to propose that we change that language to equip educators and align resources, tools, and training to be culturally responsive, build positive relationships, and reflect the diverse needs of all students. So that's the first recommendations. And I can get this to whoever needs to, so they can add it there. But feel free to ask any questions moving forward. The next bullet, which is bullet number three, under Provide Student Supports, originally it reads, provide training for all staff in adverse childhood experiences. I propose that we change it to provide training for all staffs, for all staff in adverse, adverse childhood experiences, monitor progress, and refine best practices of behavior support systems to address specific needs, specific to the needs of the school. Behavior support systems may include, but not a limited to, limited to ACES, PBAIS, restorative practices, and culture competency. Again, speaking to that, it gives the flexibility of the schools to identify what's best for their school population and versus a top-down approach. And then the third change that I recommend at the, is the last bullet in that section. It says engage your, engage our whole school community to prevent and respond to bullying based on research and evidence-based practice, effective pedagogy, and strong partnerships. This is just a one-word change, which kind of aligns with words mean things. And so we're going to change it to engage, I recommend we change it to engage our whole school community to educate and respond to bullying-based research and evidence-based practices, effective pedagogy, and support partnerships. If we had the magic bullet to prevent bullying, I think we would be all millionaires right now, but we don't. So I think it's a matter of educating and responding accordingly.
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had not spoken to Ms. Satterfield before she put out this sheet, but I can tell you that our office would certainly recommend that, that these changes be made. First, because it does make the plan more consistent with, with what, with previous correspondence from the board. And more importantly, the, her third point aligns to the Tennessee Code Annotated statute regarding harassment and bullying. So, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or, or comments on that?
Make a motion?
This would be, the next week we'll do that. So I'm thinking without, did you want to respond to the?
It's not to hers. I'm fine with this. It's kind of within this section.
Okay. Hold that one second if you would then. Since I'm not hearing any objection, then we'll, we'll have staff go ahead and add this wording in before we vote.
Yes, and I'll send, I'll send it to, I guess, Terry and Kay to get it through. But there will be our wonderful Jennifer, Board Member Owen, did see a grammar mistake, so we'll change that as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right. Still in eliminating disparities, Ms. Bab?
Yes, mine deal with the metrics, not the bullet points on the front. Not the objectives, but getting into what we're measuring. And I guess on, if you go to this page that we have, under Provide Student Support, one of, the third one down is percentage of certified staff of color. I just, I have no idea what that means. So I didn't know if there could be, maybe that's a term that is good, but I, to me, when we're talking about disparity, I mean disparities, there's a lot of different things we're trying to measure with that. And I just didn't know what that term meant. Does that make sense?
Okay. I'm trying to find
Percentage of certified staff of color. I just think color is a very ambiguous word. And maybe it's not. I mean, I
Well, I don't know what to say. It appears, it appears to kind of be the terminology that is
Okay.
being used.
And if, if that's
But I, I can't speak beyond that.
Okay.
In any measure.
I just, I didn't know if that, I guess my thing is that is, is that encompassing us trying to have a, because obviously what we're trying to do is, the thought behind this is trying to increase our diversity. That's, that's what we're trying to measure. I just didn't know if that terminology included the Hispanic population, African-American population. I wasn't, that's what I wasn't really sure about with just the term color. So that was my question. And then my other one is when we get down to improve student access, we have over on the page before where we have improved student access, what the, one of the objectives is develop strategies to ensure student access to advanced academic programs and career and technological, let me see. I don't think I, let me see. Oh, I'm sorry, it's the second bullet there. Continue to review, evaluate, and strengthen special education services for students with disabilities. So we're trying to improve their services, but what we're measuring is their out-of-school suspension. And I don't know that that met, to me, that metric doesn't match what we're trying to do. I mean, I think out-of-school suspensions, we hope, will help with academic, but that just doesn't seem to me, and I'm not an academic, so that's where I'm kind of looking for some expertise here from people. That just does not seem like a good metric to me on that one. And then our third bullet was maintain and reinforce the KCS commitment to art education, and we're not measuring that in any way. So I also think there needs to be, if that's one of our objectives, we need to be measuring it.
All right. Just a comment.
Sure.
When we review, evaluate, and strengthen a service, any service, I'm, I'm wondering, besides just making it a checked box, that, that we did these things, how, do you have any recommendation on how it could be evaluated?
I, I don't. I actually, probably, and maybe I should have had this conversation before, probably talking special ed, is if we're trying, if, if our goal, but if we're having a goal of doing this, I just don't feel like the metric is a very good match for it. But is Ms. Drennan here? Could she maybe address that? And, and maybe the out-of-school suspensions does address that. That's what I'm kind of trying to see if she might know that.
Thank you. So I guess when I look at this, continue to review, evaluate, and strengthen special education services for students with disabilities, I would have a couple of comments. Number one, the progress that is reported on students with disabilities is really on an individual basis. When you look at how their IEPs are implemented, you do have the, you can pull out growth data for the subgroup for students with disabilities. And we are monitored, we are currently monitored that by, by, on that, on that rubric by the State Department of Education. And it is part of our comprehensive plan that we have submitted for T and Ready.
Okay. Well, I guess what then I'm asking is, do you feel like the out-of-school suspension rate is then a good metric to go back to what we're trying to do there?
Um, so I guess from, I would, I would say that I probably agree with your question that that might not be the best metric. But I'm going by what I'm interpreting this to mean. So
Okay.
Again, services is a really broad, when you talk about providing services to students because there's all types of different services. There's, the, the language becomes very technical when you're talking about students with disabilities.
And I can imagine an, an easy metric in this subject is very hard because it's not just a T and Ready score or something like that. So I, I guess I'm struggling with it a little bit as to whether, I mean, I, I, I think we need to address the fact that we are, improving things for our special ed population is definitely an objective of us. I just worry that our metric is really not metric is really not helpful.
When you look at the overall student access, when you think about access as an inclusion, we monitor that as well as the State Department of Education, and every school, when they pull, every principal, when they pull up easy IEP, they can see on their front screen the level of students as measured by the State Department, and how many of those students are spending 80% or more of their time in the general education classroom, how many of those kids spend 40% or less time in the general education classroom? That is a metric that we have access to, and we are currently measured by, again, by the Tennessee Department of Education, because the feds monitor the state. So when you think about improving student access, that's also a metric.
So would that be a better metric to show that we're being successful?
I would think so. And if you look at our data over the past several years, we've improved in that area every year.
And it seems, I mean, that sounds like something we would want to continue to improve.
Certainly, it is a targeted goal for us, yes.
I mean, I would suggest, I think that would be a better metric to use, and I don't know if there's someone that could craft the wording of that, because I'm not an expertise, you know, I don't have, but I think that would be better than just measuring the out-of-school suspension rate.
Ms. Drennan, would you write just a bullet?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
That would address the metric that you're talking about?
Absolutely.
As under, and we can consider adding it under improved student access?
Yeah.
To be more relevant?
Yeah, I think just to take the place of out-of-school, unless we feel like we need to measure the out-of-school, I mean, and maybe we do need to measure the out-of-school suspensions, which we might need to, because that is, maybe it needs to be in addition?
Yeah, and I would support keeping that.
Okay.
But I like your comment about perhaps using this.
Because I think they're measuring two different things.
Okay, I agree.
I think that measuring out-of-school suspensions almost goes back to our PBIS, you know, kind of training of staff on some other areas. And then, this is not probably Ms. Drennan, but also, do we feel like we need to have a metric on art education? Or do you want to talk?
I have a question.
Okay, I'll see to you.
Yes, please.
Thank you, while she's here. Okay, I did have a question, and I forgot it until we were having this conversation. Under narrow achievement gaps, it says success rate in all tested subjects for students in the, for students in the students with disability student group. So does that mean, when you read that, do you think it's on eliminating disparities on that metric page?
Okay, oh shit.
Narrow, under narrow achievement gaps, and then the second metric on that second section.
Okay.
So success rate in all tested subjects for students in the students with disability student group. So when that says success rate, I mean, are you reading that as proficiency, or is there, would that, would that mean something else? Do you know?
Who generated that terminology? I guess I would need to refer that question back to.
To that person.
My understanding is, Dr. Roswick has indicated that someone on the board, can you, whoever designed, who designed that metric, just tell me what that meant to them, and then I can respond.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was maybe given to us, so.
Okay.
So maybe, would you, do you mind looking at that metric and just, we might need to change the way that's worded, because that, I don't know what that means either, so, because we, the committee did not review the metrics.
Okay.
So we have not had a discussion about the metrics, so if, I think we may just need to, it says success rate a few times there in that particular section, I think we probably just need to review that language.
So my suggestion is maybe we consult with Dr. Roswick and the REA group to maybe design what that would look like and be a little bit more effective.
I think that would be better, because, yeah, so that we can make sure, I want to, I don't want to ask for something that is not something that you would already measure, that would be, so we just need to make sure that that's the correct measurement.
Okay.
If I may, I do think, oh, go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
Oh, I was just gonna say, one place to start with might be the report card. I want to say that the report card, the way it's broken down refers to success rate. So that may be where that came from, I'm not sure, but.
Okay, and if it is, that's fine, I just think we need to make sure that we, that it is something that you would be, you know, having, or that REA would have access to and be, and makes sense for special education.
Right.
All right, and I'm, Mr. Thomas, perhaps you could, I mean, these metrics came from somewhere, do you think all of this is off the, a metric of the state report card then?
Oh, I don't know that all of them are, but I just seem like I remember when, looking at the report card, it talked about the success rate, you know, different, but we'll follow up on that.
All right, I mean, these metrics from 2017, 18 came from somewhere, and the numbers, I would, I would almost bet it's tied somehow to our state reporting. Mr. Thomas?
And I think Dr. Roswick's got some information, maybe.
That's great, sorry, thank you. No, I was actually looking at the other question when that was asked, so I couldn't find success rate, but you're exactly right. So the success rate is kind of, there's a matrix of different data points that come out, so that we get a success rate for every subgroup and the overall, that sort of thing, so that is, that is part of the state reporting. It'll take things, you kind of get the best of sometimes, absolute achievement versus growth versus those kinds of things, and there's kind of a matrix you go across, and so the state gives you different ways to hit that mark, and that's why, and that's what you get for an overall success rate for subgroups, schools, and overall districts. So that is a state terminology for that measurement.
All right, so this basically came right off our state report card, so is everyone all right then if we just, we leave that as is? All right, do we still want Ms. Massey, or Ms. Drennan to address that bullet, or are we going to just leave it, since this is the state's wording? All right. Yay for you. Okay. All right, we're still looking, Ms. Bab?
So, so under the improved student access bullets, and this is more just a visual thing, I do think those bottom two bullets that are there right now, they need to be flipped. I just think we need to match, you know, this is, if you look at the first page of objectives, you've got three objectives, and I think the metrics need to fall on the page matching the day before the page after, but, you know, I'm looking at our objective on art education, and I'm not really sure how you do measure that, I mean, it's basically, we're kind of, we just want to be good about art, but I do feel like if we're putting it in there, we need to have some way to measure. Do you have any thoughts, Mr. Thomas, on if there are ways to measure arts education?
I think we'll probably, unless.
There's a reason there wasn't a metric.
Get together with staff and a research team and talk about it, and come up with a way that we can, we can do that. Of course, you know, offerings is one way to make sure and ensure that the offerings are there, also, looking at the, and student enrollment might be another way to.
I mean, I don't want to make work and make up busy work to just have a metric, so, I mean, I guess just to see if there is something meaningful, if we're going to have it as an objective in our strategic plan, how do we know five years, and I guess that's how I, I guess I would think about it, five years from now, how do we know we're doing?
I think it's a good, a great point, if we're going to have it there, there ought to be a way to know that we're doing what we're saying, that we're doing, so, yeah, we'll look at that and try to come up with something, something for you.
All right, thank you, thank you, good conversation. Any other comments on the eliminating disparities section? All right, moving on to creating a positive culture. Are there any questions or comments? Sorry, Ms. Bab, that's okay.
Okay, I had brought this up in our discussion the other day, but basically, under exceptional place to work and learn, one of the bullets is continue to evaluate and improve working and learning conditions, which I think is very important, and I do it, but then when I look over at our metrics, we have kept it that we are basically talking to our teachers, and I think there's a whole culture in our building beyond just our teachers, so I would, and we had talked about adding, and I saw it somewhere else, where we're going to add evaluation of, is it classified, I always want to get the terminology, the non-teachers, just classified staff, that it looks like we are developing a, we will be developing a survey to actually get that, but I do think creating a positive culture in our schools, I think we need to add the fact somehow that we're looking at how our classified staff feels also as a metric. And it might even be percentage of teachers and classified staff, but I do think it's almost a difference, I mean, you could have the teachers that feel it is a fabulous culture that's going on, and it is not that same culture for the classified staff.
Ms. Owen?
Since we discussed that in our evaluation tool, also, that would be a baseline score, since that would be a new tool, a new survey, and so that would not have a goal number, so that would be added in as a baseline score if we wanted to add that.
And then future years, we could see that we're wanting to go up.
Yeah, good point, all right. All right, any other comments on creative, creating a positive culture? Okay, and now I'm looking at the back page for Mr. Thomas. Okay, taking some of these suggestions under consideration, is there anything else that anyone would like to add to the strategic? Ms. Horn?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. If, I know Ms. Good has taken good notes, so I, perhaps we can compile all of these, and if it's okay with the board, go ahead and send out a revised copy prior to our meeting next Wednesday, so that we can make a motion to approve the revised copy, if that would be agreeable to the board.
Any objections? Thank you, Ms. Horn, and I saw you taking some pretty good notes there too, so.
I think I have some notes, thank you.
Perhaps you could talk with Ms. Good and be, all right, I know that would be helpful to her also. All right, anything else on the strategic plan? Okay, before we move into public forum, Mr. Norman, you had asked for a discussion on certified employees. Before you begin, just, is everyone all right if we push on through, or do we need a break? We have this one item, and then four, public forum. You want a break?
I knocked my glass over. No, I'm good, I'm ready, if people are ready to go. This won't take that long.
All right, all right, go ahead, Mr. Norman, then, I'm going with consensus here.
All right, thank you, and first I want to say, this has got a little history, of course, in terms of, for a long time, we've talked about how to get more money to the teachers in the classroom. So certainly Gary Spencer and Joe Snyder have accommodated me more than once when we'd have discussions about this in past budget meetings. So I'm still sort of after that goal, so how can we do this? Well, to me, one of the, one of the things that takes place that probably inhibits that is that every certified employee is basically in one group. And so, the, we've talked about, or I've talked about this to Gary and Joe, and how to do, how to, maybe possibly how to differentiate between certified employees based on their job, based on what they do. Thank you. So, and I haven't been so efficient as Evady and written it all down and have it ready to go for everybody to look at, but I will, and first, before I get started, I want to apologize to Ron, like Ron doesn't have enough to do, but the, so what I would like to do is work up kind of an outline of what we might do hypothetically within the certified categories, such that we've got, we've got categories of certified people, one category, say, would get a 4% raise, another category would get a 3% raise, another category would get a 2% raise, and so on, 1% raise. And so, that's kind of the sketch outline of it, and so, I'll put this in a document, and I'll send it to Ron, and I'll send it to all the board members, but that's the idea. So with the emphasis, of course, being on the classroom teacher, that's where the biggest raise would go, and then, sort of based on the amount of contact with students, direct contact with students would be sort of the basis for the different categories. So anyway, that's what I'll do, and if you all'd like to talk more about it or ask questions, fine, that's my idea, that's what I'm going to throw at.
Any comments, questions? I appreciate you talking about that, Tony, because I know we all definitely want to get as much increase as we can, and I'm certainly open for discussion in it, I know sometimes that gets very sticky in a hurry, because we have so many support people, support certified people, that even within, even their categories might have different jobs, some of them might be classroom assigned 90% of the time, and the same role, and another school might only be direct student service 10% of the time. We get into things like our guidance counselors, you know, some of them are purely administrative, some of them are in the classroom all the time, you get into school psychologists and speech and language, but I just say all that to say that it could prove to be challenging, but I certainly, you know, I think we are all open to entertaining anything that we feel like would be equitable for sure, so thank you, thank you for that. All right, without any more comments, questions, we'll move into public forum. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, our first speaker is Todd Shelton. Just a reminder for all our public speakers, if you would present, or let us know your name and county of residence, please. Go ahead, Mr. Shelton.
Okay, Todd Shelton is my name, and I live in South Knox County. My kids all went to school and graduated there. I want to thank y'all for all the work you've been doing. I think about when you took on these duties and then you found out just how much you have to do, we appreciate your energy, and I also want to thank you for valuing the public forum, and I hope you will continue to do that. My thoughts today are about, and I'm also representing Stop School Pushout, and a coalition of groups that have gotten together to support y'all in trying to provide good education for our kids. My thoughts today are about the completion of the new strategic plan, I'm focusing on the cultural competency training provided to teachers and staff. Actually, y'all corrected some of what I was suggesting, I'll go ahead and go through this, because I may have missed some of it, but we know that the DEO task force recommended this, and it was approved by the Board of Directors. My concern is that it is referred to indirectly in the strategic plan. I, however, was happy to see the exact wording in the metrics where it just came out a few days ago. We feel it needs to be out front in the narrative, and several comments were made. Our suggestions were that under the second section, and this has to do with the eliminating disparities, bullet two, that it be changed to fund and equip educators with resources, with resources, parentheses, such as more supportive staff, tools and training such as PBS, restorative practices, and cultural diversity training, to build strong relationships with all the students, including those from marginalized environments. with all the students, including those from marginalized environments. And I think all of y'all have a copy of this, I tried to send it to you, so you can check me. And by the way, we feel that, and this is something I think is special, that we forget, that there are many students who are scholastically proficient, but will also and can also use the influences of these practices, such as restorative practices, PBIS, and cultural competency. It's not restricted to marginalized communities, so it's important, I think, for us to, under part two, again, bullet six, we suggest that, we suggest retain experienced and trained educators in PBIS restorative practices and cultural competency training at high-need schools. I will say again how important teacher training in these three areas, the PBIS cultural competency and restorative practices are to the teachers and the support staff, and the extra support staff that sometimes is needed to follow through what has been learned from these, these trainings. Sometimes it means some more supportive staff, so that the classroom teacher can make good use of the training. My, my experience with cultural competency training has been valuable to me in my experience with school-aged children, as well as adults in my community. I could go to a training tomorrow, and I would end up coming up and find some new perception that I had missed before. I don't think there's ever enough of this training, and it's very healthy for all of us. We have heard some folks complain about it, but we have heard many folks say how enlightening it is, and they can see how important it can be in their teachings. I was going to add, the discussion that y'all had just now, under eliminating disparities, under narrowing achievement gaps, the bullet, I guess, the second and the third bullet in there, those, I thought those were very good questions, and, and, and I hadn't seen them, but I, I had noticed that the, in bullet three, continue to invest in the professional growth and support of all educators by offering training and learning opportunities. I felt like there was some relevancy there, only if we include, you know, additional support staff and offering training in PBIS restorative.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you very much. And I would just end by saying, if you make a budget to ask for what the Knox County School needs without cuts, then we will all support you all the way through the County Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, Gordon Gibson?
I'm Gordon Gibson, I live in East Knoxville, represented by Ms. Satterfield. You can tell by the shirt that Todd and I have bumped into each other before. I want to thank you all very much for doing some hard work on, on the strategic plan over a period of months, both Board and staff. I think what you're looking at today is a much improved document. I'm really pleased to see you continuing to work to fine-tune it. Yes, you, you could probably do this for months on end, but, okay, you've reached, reached a pretty good point, I think. I would hold up one thing in the current metrics. I'm very pleased to see some serious changes in the percentage of Black, Hispanic, Native American students who have at least one out-of-school suspension. This is something that the Disparities in Educational Outcomes Task Force looked at, raised great concerns about, and yes, it's very important that those numbers go down. It's also important that the disparities, I attended the meeting at which staff reported on the change in out-of-school and in-school suspensions had happened, but was concerned that although the numbers had gone down for both students of color and white students, both special needs students and other students, that there were still disparities. So whether or not it's included as a metric in the strategic plan, that, that is something that you need to work on over the next three years, five years, whatever the span is here. And we all realize, this takes money, and you are facing scary money numbers, which just this week got scarier, because the Governor is apparently playing games with BEP funds. It is important, I believe, like Todd, that as you approach funding, you figure out what our school system needs, what do we need to support our students, and that you ask for that. It's not your job to figure out, well, they never give us this, so we won't ask for it. Ask for what we need in our school system, we will back you up. I remember last year, when it looked like you were going to have to whack the daylights out of some important programs, and this room overflowed, I was one of the ones stuck outside. And I think that'll happen again, if the school system is denied what it needs in order to function. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Lance McCold is next.
Lance McCold, Knox County. Before I speak, could I, could I hand, get someone to spread, hand this out to the Board, or may?
Yes. Oh, Tony, stop.
Thank you. I want to, Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I want to thank you for making transparency in program evaluation and budgeting a part of the strategic plan. Nothing builds trust more than transparency. You don't have to agree with people, but if you know where they're coming from, you can trust them. As a community learns about that the Board and the staff are consistently open and honest, you'll find that more, find even more support for the Board and our schools. This Board and the staff deserve a lot of appreciation for increased transparency around budget this year. The March 7th community meeting was a highlight. I believe that budget, transparency on budgeting will pay off for our schools now and into the future. Thanks, thanks to the Bud, the transparency of staff, the community is gaining a clear idea why Knox County Schools will need more money next school year. At this time, I'd refer you to the sheet called, that I handed out, needed 2019, 2020 Knox County School funding increases, that I ask you to share with you. The document is a summary of information provided by the staff that's been organized to make it easier to understand, easier to understand our schools' funding needs. Let me draw your attention to the nondiscriminatory category, amounting to about $19 million increase. Most of the nondiscriminatory items are either existing legal or financial commitments, primarily those listed under fixed increases and employee benefits. I'd note that none of these items is an enhancement of anything the schools are doing, they are just the costs of carrying on the current program. From discussing the items with, in this category with staff, I'm confident that, that each has a very solid foundation. Similarly, the critical student needs are simply the costs of carrying out our schools' responsibility to English-language learners and to students with special needs. Likewise, there is nothing optional about providing our students with textbooks, books that are aligned with state standards. The community can clearly see that there is nothing frivolous or wasteful in these items. Under, at, at fourteen and a half million dollars, the salary enhancement area is the second-largest category. The Board knows well why these raises are essential. The community knows that teachers are the heart of the schools, and the community understands that if we don't pay teachers adequately, we will continue losing them to other districts and to other kinds of work. All this is to say that the staff has built an extremely solid case for the necessity of about $32 million, by my accounting, of essential spending increases over this year for next year. Of course, we know that the, the Board has no power to raise funds, nearly all KCS operating funds come from the state and county governments. This Board's role, indeed its obligation, is to figure out how much money our schools need and to ask for it. The community is counting on you to advocate for the funds our schools need to support our students. I'm confident that the community will support you. Certainly, I promise you to do my personal best to support your work for the funds our schools need to support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance, we appreciate that. And Mr. Wheeler? Mr. Wheeler is our final speaker tonight.
Does that mean I'd be the best speaker, or does that mean you're what?
The best for last, Carl.
First of all, let me thank you, Madam Chair, and the Board members, for allowing us, including myself, to present to you a little different perspective that I'm sure you're cognizant of. I intended to talk about, in terms of this document we're working on, and in turn, I wanted to talk about teachers in terms of adequacy. Do we have enough? Where do we not have enough? Where do we need to present and put our efforts to increase our teacher size or capacity to what we need? As Lance said, we want you to put together a plan, financial plan, that produces what you think, what the community thinks is needed for our school system. One of those elements, of course, is teachers. I looked at some data a couple of years ago, year and a half ago, that showed that, that the school board had been challenged with a number of departures in terms of teachers, and challenges to replace those teachers. And we all know why that is. We may not say it out loud, but we know that it's a money thing. People follow the money. So I did see a presentation that one of the staff members did for this upcoming year, let's say, and I'm sure you guys are implementing that plan now, which will bring forth, hopefully, new teachers to fill the gaps that we have. And I encourage you to keep doing that. That presentation was an excellent presentation, and by my standards, if you was to follow that, you would meet your goals. And I think that's what we're all looking for, to meet our goals. So having said that, I'm not going to spend a whole lot more time up here, but I am going to suggest that after listening to some additional comments on this plan, the strategic planning, it seems to me that there, there needs to be some more gathering around the table, so to speak, to fine-tune these things, and get the marks and the words and the matrix the way we want them, okay? So I would encourage you that whenever you do this, allow the public to, to, to come in and say something. Get some feedback from the public. I know you get a lot of that now, probably more than you want, but, but we, we, we want the same thing that you want, and that's the best for our children, the best education they can get out of this county, okay? And that's for all children. Doesn't matter shades, color, whether they're challenged physically or mentally, they all should get the best we can provide for them. So I encourage you to do that. And I thank you for allowing me to have this moment to speak to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And Madam Chair, that concludes public forum.
Thank you. And we'll move on now to Board Forum. Ms. Satterfield? Nothing? Ms. Owen?
Since we are discussing money, I would like to note some numbers that currently exist. While we could ask for money that does not exist, that doesn't seem very sensible. We know that money does exist at the state level, but that it's being used for other purposes, and looking only at the voucher bill as it, in its current form, with a cap at year five of 15,000 students per year, we will come up with $365 million spent on this program by the fifth year. So that is a very significant amount that we are looking at. But we need to very carefully consider where the state is choosing to put money, and it would be extremely helpful if our community would speak with legislators about the money that is there, instead of the money that is not there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Mine's a little happier than that. So congratulations to the Bearden Boys Basketball Team for their state championship. And that's a, that's a, an incredible thing, those guys will, they'll talk about that when they're 65 years old and meeting down at Buddy's or whatever, so that's a, that's a great thing. So congratulations to them. Also, the Board will be noticed that the Halls Outdoor Classroom Annual Picnic Get Together, blah, 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 is April 16th, so you all get noticed on that. It's a big fun thing that my, our department in county engineering and public works help with, and it's fun, barbecue, they got stuff for little kids, got a petting zoo, all kinds of good stuff. So, six, April 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Halls, somewhere around Halls, I'm not sure. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, you know, we get to the end of the year, and we all, everybody gets a little tired, so I just want to thank the staff and our teachers and everybody in our schools who are working so hard to finish the year strong. And I also wanted to say I appreciate Mr. McPherson and his team going over with the Governor, to, with the Mayor, to meet with the Governor last week. I appreciate the Mayor advocating for our school system and for what resources we need, and so I just wanted to extend my thanks for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bab?
A couple of things, I would like to kind of follow up with Ms. Owen's comments. I, you know, I'm very troubled about what's going on right now with the ESA and voucher bill, and I think the, I think even if someone supports vouchers, I hope that they will seriously read this legislation and see some of the problems that we're seeing with it and contact their legislators. But on a happier note, my district is really taking over downtown on Friday night. Bearden Elementary School is going to have an art display at the Bijou Theater, and the West APIB art students are going to have a display Friday night at the Miller Building. There's going to be Friday and Saturday night, and then Sequoia Elementary, right on the corner at the Standard, is having a fundraiser, so I think I'm just going to make my way down Gate Street on Friday night to support my district, but especially the art shows, I think will be a really fun opportunity for people to see the display of art, and as we talked about art in our strategic plan, I mean, we've got some amazing artists in our community.
It's Kristy? No? All right. Any, any more comments, questions? Without objection, we are adjourned.